All right, we're ready. Someday we'll have a button. All right, now we have Weezy.
That's fair.
I won't hit it that hard next year. Okay. We're calling this meeting to order. This is our city council regular meeting. We're in City Hall Council Chambers, three eighty-nine Spur Street. It's Tuesday, May twenty-first. It's quarter after seven, and we're calling the meeting to order and asking the clerk if she please call the rule. Yes. Deputy Mayor Bouganam?
Present.
Bill Kowicki?
Here.
Weezy Michael?
Here.
Danielle Trumbull?
Here.
Dave Harshbarger?
Here.
Brian Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Celine?
Here.
Now, we're going to stand for the pledge. Hi, gentlemen, it's the United States of America. And to the Republic, who stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, we're going to do approval of the minutes. We're approving the May seventh regular meeting minutes. Um, shall I apply a proclamation? Okay. May I send some clarification by councillor's report to Christine? So. So that's my report. Okay. No problem. And so those are approved. Um, we don't have correspondence. We're looking at public hearings. So these are specific hearings on specific topics. Later on in the meeting, we'll have a public portion on any topic. So this is an ordinance amending Article three six five of the city code, providing for off-street parking. So we're going to open this public hearing. If anyone's wanting to talk about this specific item, this is your moment. Now, we're going to close that public hearing. Now, we're going to have Item B, an ordinance repealing city code section three seventy-one ten, prohibiting solicitation of persons traveling in vehicles in the public rightsway. So you're going to open this public hearing. So if you're wanting to speak on that topic, you just come forward.
Hi, yeah, I'm going to go ahead too. But, um, when did Mayor Anfolds, uh, did it come in, blah, blah, blah? But, um, I wanted to, yeah, kind of just appeal the hall again about if you repeal this, um, opinion in the words, and I, I don't have any problems with that. But I would request that you, um, implement the same, um, standing in the road ordinance that the county has passed. I mean, I'm going to try to go talk to all the cities and try to get everyone in the county to do the same thing so that we have consistency regardless of where someone's driving. Um, I'm going to tell you today, there's people standing up, you know, by the sheets all the time and all hours of the night. I've mentioned that before, um, and it's just unsafe. At some point in time, someone is definitely going to get hit. So that's my request.
Appreciate it. Sir, anyone wishing to speak on this item? All right. Thank you. Unfinished business, boards and commissions. I think we have a few down this direction.
Mayor, if I may nominate Darren Taylor for the Planning Commission for first ward.
Second. Second.
Yep, and I'd like to nominate.
Oh, well, we'll, um.
By acclamation?
By acclamation, just so we're clear on that we're putting that one in. Now it's your turn. Yep.
I'd like to nominate Christine Zorres with the three, uh, three board.
Second.
All right. We're good?
Yep.
Acclamation, okay. Um, now we're to the public portion. Uh, this is the public portion, which will be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. And that would be that you would come to the podium and you would state your name and your address. And that you would abide by, there's three, um, uh, colors there, similar to, um, traffic colors. So it's green and then yellow and then red. Uh, and when it's red, you should be stopped. And, uh, um, please feel free to come forward and I don't know if there's, was there a sign up, sign up sheet? Okay. We will have a sign up sheet in a second. And then you would. And if you didn't sign up and you still would like to speak, that is totally allowed. You just would wait until the end of the list. So we start with Amanda Goddard, um, which we're going to open, open this portion. And then, um, if Amanda would like to come forward, that'd be great.
Hello, I'm Amanda Goddard. Um, I live on four thirty-nine Baird Street. Um, I've been here, um, before to speak on, on my thoughts on homelessness here in Morgantown. And, um, tonight I've come in just to speak, uh, my support for, um, the, some of the proposed policies, um, such as banning source of income discrimination, um, creating a housing department, and, um, the creation of a municipal ID system. Um, I would like to thank, uh, council, Councilman Butcher for, um, taking charge in the creation of these policies. Um, as someone who's lived downtown for, or close to downtown for, um, years, I am deeply concerned about, um, the growing number of homelessness, uh, here. And, um, I do want to support every effort that there is to, um, help the sur- the survival of, um, our homeless folks here in Morgantown. Um, yeah, like I said, the number seems to be growing more and more over time. Um, and I do consider the life of a homeless person no less than mine or that of anyone else's. Um, I support, um, the banning discrimina- the banning of, uh, discrimination of a person's source of income because I see that as a way of eliminating one of the many barriers that a person has, um, towards achieving housing. To me, as long as a landlord is being paid, um, every month on time for rent, it shouldn't matter whether, um, that income came from social security or, um, a voucher or anything else. Um, I support the development of a housing department because I think that this would be a really wonderful, um, start to, um, work towards, um, eliminating more barriers and, um, just creating more steps towards, uh, finding more housing here in Morgantown within the ci- city limits. And, um, I also want to speak on behalf of, um, myself and others that are involved in, um, organizing to help the homeless here in Morgantown. We are very help, we are very happy to, um, work with you on, um, any, like, immediate solution towards helping the homeless, like, um, public restrooms, um, for homeless people, um, storage units for homeless people, and, um, more, like, unrestricted bus passes, um, which would help give, uh, more opportunities for, um, the homeless folks here in Morgantown to, um, you know, network and, um, do whatever they need to do to, um, overcome homelessness and find, like, a job or a place to live and things like that. That is all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Marianne Hels? Hels, pardon me.
Uh, one other question. Uh, originally I was just going to talk about the, um, the panhandling ordinance. But, uh, in, in terms of, you know, homelessness is something that's a, a really important thing to know as well. And if you get into a situation where you're working with the county and with the other cities, I'm just requesting to get involved and be on whatever kind of panels or committees, whatever you've got set up. I'd like to be part of that. I'd like to offer my help. Um, I tell you, I've been up to Barlow and I've talked to folks, so I'm trying to really know what some of the problems are and, um, and help the solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Marley Nigus?
Good afternoon. Uh, good evening. Marley Nigus, ten ninety-three Saverden Avenue in Trower Park. And I'm going to say thank you to the city council for, um, having these wonderful discussions about, um, you know, opportunities for the future of our community, uh, specifically related to housing department, housing coordinator and such. Um, I'm developing, uh, feedback on that. This is a little bit, uh, work in progress, so I will email an updated version, um, this evening. But I just want to say thank you all for, uh, considering this. And I feel like this is a very, um, positive opportunity for the community.
Are you wanting to leave that with us? Oh, you're getting emailed.
Yeah.
Email it away.
I realize that may not stay.
Oh, we're good.
I'll get it too.
We're good.
Thank you.
We don't want anything before it's read. All right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sure. You do not have to be on the list of this group. Come in and talk.
But, um, you know, I'm here in support of the homeless. I think that we need to come together to work out this problem. And when I was at the last meeting, there were a whole lot of suggestions of what we need to do. We can have a whole lot of ideas on paper, but if those ideas don't take legs and start moving, we'll never accomplish anything. So as a concerned citizen, as a concerned citizen and a local pastor, we need to come together to work this problem out. And, uh, there was a gentleman who, uh, had mentioned about he was homeless. And he could relate to some of the things that the homeless went through. But as I said before, if we don't work together, it won't work. If the citizens of Morgantown don't work together with the council, it won't work. If council, if you all don't work together to solve, to help solve this problem, it won't work. And your leader is the mayor. We all are supposed to work together to accomplish something. If you take two things off of the list that you all brought forth and work towards accomplishing, some of those ideas will get a victory. But working together will not, it won't work. So, you know, I just, I just want to say that we need to come together and work together. Because that's how we're going to defeat this problem, by working together. There's no big ideas and no use. We all need to work together for common cause.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? This is your moment. Quite so. Closing this public portion. Now, we're on a consent agenda. So these items we vote on, um, as is unless someone wishes to take them off of the consent agenda. So here are the two items. Item A, consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance amending Article three sixty-five of the city code, providing for off-street parking. The first reading was five seven twenty-four. Second item on the consent agenda is consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance repealing city code section three seventy-one ten, prohibiting solicitation of persons traveling in vehicles on the public right, public rightsway. First reading was five seven twenty-four. And so both of these items together form the consent agenda. Um, do I hear motion?
Move to a per.
Second.
Thank you. And then if the clerk would please call the rule. Unless, pardon, we'll stop a beat if somebody wants to do something with this. Then if you'd please, uh. Deputy Mayor Bouganam?
Yes.
Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Weezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Item A is consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual budget in the city of Morgantown, as shown in the revised budget attached here too and made a part of this ordinance, as the same applies to the general fund. And if we would, um, let's, um, have a motion and then, um, ask our, uh, ask our budget director if you would, our finance director if you would come forward. Move to a per.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Hello.
I am suggesting one more revision to the twenty-three, twenty-four general fund budget, uh, just end of year maintenance. Um, what we did was did a pretty deep dive into our accounts and projected them out to the end of the year and tried to identify any areas, uh, that could cause some compliance issues at the end of the year. Revenues, uh, property taxes are lagging behind a little bit, so I am suggesting lowering, uh, property tax revenue, uh, at two hundred thousand dollars. Um, this I believe would cost my, my own account, so I'm not paid to pay it. But on the flip side, um, being that taxes, uh, still continue to be strong of the, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar adjustments to BNOs. I'm happy to say three hundred and fifty thousand is from construction projects, uh, that we will be transferring to the capital escrow fund, uh, to, to fund some of our own city projects. And that makes up the, uh, large majority of the expenditures that was listed. Uh, other items are just areas that possibly could cause issues by the end of the year. Uh, we want to make sure that we have coverage for that. I'd be happy to go into more detail, but if you mind for answering questions that could relate to those.
Just curious on the allocation, um, how you identified needs for allocating the amounts?
The, uh, what I did was. I'm sorry?
Friddy over, it's just curious.
Just, uh, did a projection based on, uh, historic data and what we had been running and projected out the remaining three months. And if there was any that, you know, was a, a very, very close to being over budgeted, uh, and there were some, uh, you know, that are actual, uh, costs that, that we do know of, uh, for example, finance, uh, addition, the seventy-five hundred dollars was for a, uh, project that we had pulled into relating to, to some of our pension plans. But, you know, it is based upon, uh, historical trends and, um, just end of year projection based on the work months.
Thanks.
With these property taxes, um, you say it's primarily because of delinquency?
That would be my best guess. We don't get a lot of information, uh, from the county, and we send just the property tax money. Uh, most of the money has been paid to this, uh, through the year, the last couple of months, of course, below, and we are going to be about two hundred thousand dollars short. And considering, you know, based upon the assessed values and, uh, uh, rates that we adopted, uh, last year at this time, it would be almost, um, happening in the current accounts.
Is there any hope that that would be retrieved?
Yes, yes, uh. With, with an RBL system, there is current year and then there's prior year. And that prior year number fluctuates a good bit and it's kind of hard to predict. So as they would collect prior year amounts, that number then would increase, uh, for the same year.
So it's not property devaluation?
No.
Tell us how, um, how delinquencies are handled. Like, is that something? Like, is that something that the county works to collect or how is that?
This, this is, it is all county. Uh, like I said, we don't, we can request data from the county. Uh, but as far as getting into a lot of detail, uh, we don't receive much against the county.
So they would handle if there's a delinquency?
Would, would more data and detail from the county be helpful to your office? Is it something like worth the county's time, I guess?
We can, we can take a look at it and see, you know, what areas might be causing that, absolutely. But it's, it's not going to change at all, obviously.
Yeah. So it'll fluctuate either way. Is, do you feel like there would be a better ability to predict trends if you had more data? Maybe, like I said, just anything that would help your office if it's worth the time?
Trend, trends, possibly.
Possibly.
It, it's kind of hard to predict. Like I said, that, that prior year number, uh, it fluctuates quite a bit. Certainly could, could look into that, yes.
Thank you.
Seems like we're calling the question, yes? Yeah, alright.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Bouganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes, passes unanimously. Item B is consideration of approval of a resolution in the city of Morgantown, West Virginia, declaring its official intent to be reimbursed from the proceeds of bonds to be issued by Morgantown Building Commission for expenditures in connection with the design, acquisition, construction, furnishing, and equipping of improvements to the recreation facilities located at Marilla Park in the city made prior to the issuance of tax-exempt lease revenue bonds or other obligations. And we're going to start with our city attorney, Ryan Simonton, and then you will call up others.
Motion first?
Pardon? A motion first would be a great idea.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second. Good point.
Thank you, mayor. This item is a reimbursement resolution. A reimbursement resolution is used in connection with a financing project. It's a mechanism that allows, uh, the city or the public agency to recapture or to pay expenses of the project cost with the proceeds of the bond financing that are incurred before the bond authorizing ordinance is adopted. It doesn't obligate the city to move forward with the project, but it does allow, it does start the clock on allowing recapture of those projects. This reimbursement resolution is for a proposed, uh, lease revenue bond transaction through the Morgantown Building Commission to fund improvements to Lower Marilla Park. The project is generally described in the reimbursement resolution as construction of tennis and shelter facilities, recreational field green space, uh, parking facilities, improvements to Marilla Center, a bike slash skate park, pickleball courts, and a basketball court, and appropriate facilities. To describe the project, executive director of Bo Park, Melissa Wiles, is here. We have, uh, bond counsel, Tom Aiman, and placement agent or underwriter, Rob Steptoe, as well to describe, uh, financing mechanisms and the project in general.
Evening, um, Melissa Wiles, Bo Park. Uh, I just wanted to thank you all for having us here this evening. Um, we are moving forward with the pool. And as we finish that project, the, um, opportunity will be open to demo the old pool facility and hopefully get started on the Marilla Park improvements. Um, we have over the past actually couple of years had a lot of public input and public survey and public meetings regarding improvements to Marilla Park. Um, and one extra meeting specifically for the skate park. Uh, so we feel like we are, we are good in moving forward and capturing, uh, what the community desires for that project. Uh, and I'm going to turn the mic over to Tom and Rob, who are the experts in the numbers. Um, and I thank them for being here as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Tom Aiman, Rob Steptoe, and Jonathan. So the city attorney kind of described this very well. Um, it's, doesn't create any obligation for council to be involved with the project. It does create the ability for, uh, council or primarily Bo Park to have expenditures relating to the project, uh, prior to closing on the financing. And then if council were to decide to move forward, issue the bonds, and what allows bond proceeds to be used to reimburse Bo Park for those expenditures. So we identify in there the accounts that Bo Park would use to actually pay those costs from. It allows a very fairly long period of time, a week, like here, if you can only go back about 60 days prior to the resolution to pick up any costs that have been paid. Uh, and so you want to do this as early as you can. So that's why I'm moving forward with that now. Uh, it, it does provide that once bonds are issued, we help the city with the reimbursement allocation. So you've actually allocated some of the proceeds of the bonds to pay any of these reimbursement costs. So you identify what they are, and there's a document that does all that. Uh, we make necessary filings with the IRS that indicates that there's reimbursement. It's fairly routine. Reinvestment is very common. Um, I have timelines here. Um, the, uh, architects for the project, Thrasher Engineering, is indicating that this project right now is looking like it might go out to bid in October of this year, and then perhaps wouldn't bid in November. So that would give you a general idea of timing for, uh, bidding of, of the project. The reimbursement resolution requires a not-to-exceed bond amount to be stated. And so we're stating in here no more than $11 million in bonds to be issued by, again, the building commission, uh, for the, uh, project. And then you'll recall from prior financings where the building commission that enters into a lease actually owning improvements, lease them to council, and then through that lease, um, council or the city refaced the bonds through these payments. So if this continues to progress, and we're working on documents, the next step would be we could come back with a bond authorizing ordinance, um, of the, the building commission. Uh, and then council would have its own separate ordinance that approves the lease arrangement and authorizing the building commission to move forward with their actions. Um, and so those would be the next steps, are those ordinances. Uh, Rob Steptoe is here for Cruz and Associates, uh, to answer any questions on numbers and financing part of it. Rob, is there anything you wanted to, to say to the city?
I don't have anything really specific at this point. Just Tom, uh, indicated just now we're working on documents. We'll adjust the schedule and, uh, work with the city on, on financial, uh, statements for the offering document. And we'll, again, go and pursue a credit rating like we did on, uh, the aquatic complex. And, uh, so that process will get going once we've got documents in a place where we can put those in as part of the rating application with Moody's. Um, so we work really well with them. Uh, but we, we don't want to put the rating in too soon. We want to get it probably closer to when we issue bonds because we want to be sure it's close to when we actually go out and then issue bonds. Uh, so that there's a period after the rating where it can still be used if, uh, in circumstances were such that we wanted to, uh, pause on things until we were ready for it. So we just want to keep that, that six month or so flexibility after the ratings issued. Uh, similar to other situations that we've been through before, so. That's, that's pretty much where we are right now. Uh, I think Thrasher, um, has a good, a good grasp of the budget and I think, uh, we're in a good place to keep going with document preparation through the summer and get going with the authorizing ordinance and the, the remainder of the process. Any questions about any of that?
Curiosity, where are we in our ratings currently?
Oh, let's see. Um, there's an underlying rating, um, and then appropriation rating. So, uh, underlying rating is more of the actual financial position of the city. And then the, the, uh, appropriation rating is a little bit different just because of the risk of non-appropriation, which has never happened in West Virginia before. But they, they recognize that as part of their house. So I think, um, the rating for the appropriation risk. Yeah, it was, uh, they have all these gradations of As, but I think it's like the big A or a A. Yeah, it's the, um, the, the underlying rating is higher. It's a double A, three. And then the appropriation rating is an A2, I believe. So very marketable ratings and they help in lowering interest costs on the bottom of the market. So when we get to that point where you're, would approve, uh, the supplemental resolution, I believe, authorizing the, the offer, uh, offering document and the rating, that's where we get to tout the rating and marketing which lowers interest there. That's the whole idea. So they're, 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 they're good ratings, um, as ratings go. Um, so I think that's definitely.
City has a solid credit rating.
Yeah.
It's not AAA. The US isn't even AAA.
No, there, there used to be until, until the crash of OA, there used to be a lot of AAA credit ratings and they're literally aren't any anymore. So a double A is, there, 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 there's a hierarchy of the double A of all of the credit ratings, but to have a double A, uh, underlying that you all have, uh, is, is, is something to be proud of. It says something for the fiscal structure, condition, overall financial condition and the demographics and, uh. Yeah, okay, double A, three, underlying and A2, as I said, annual appropriation. So hopefully we get the same situation. We'll update the financials, it's one of those. We have the fiscal 23, but now we're kind of in that period where you're going between the 23 and the 24. So we'll get, we'll work with, uh, finance director Kevin Tennant, as we always do. He's great to work with. We'll get all of the updated financials and send that to, uh, to the Moody's analyst and, uh, should be, should be pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
Any, anybody else have questions?
Just always looking forward to the project. This is usually to recap, um, planning costs or any kind of, any preparatory, like if you had a, a core drilling or something. Is that the type of, is that what we're anticipating?
For?
For engineering?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where in that, where in that, uh, measure, twice, cut, once?
Yeah, yeah, we're in the state of design development right now. So it's like, there's a lot of back and forth, um, that there will be building for. Uh, so that's part of the, the statement.
Great. Always good to know the practical.
Yeah.
What does this really mean? What are we really doing here? We're getting started. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any other questions or? Steve?
Call him.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Bouganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes, passes unanimously. City manager's report.
There's one more.
Oh, 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 Megan, I have your name right here. Megan Deely, MC, consideration of approval of the 2024 street, uh, street improvement project. Bit Award 2024 13. That would be a bad one not to do. Come on.
Move to, we need a motion, right?
Need a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I was going to just let you off the hook with Stephen, but that would not be a good idea. So thank you.
Okay, do you have any questions?
No, no, no. Tell us a little bit about what we're looking at. Yes, no. I am not meaning to be confusing. Right now, we're looking at the paving plan. And if you would give us a little synopsis about how this is working, like the fact that it's in certain areas or how that saves us costs, stuff like that.
Well, uh, Deputy Mayor's first, um, I just passed around a little four-page document showing this year's streets. It's still roughly five and a half miles of paving. Um, it was street only this year, no APA ramps. We'll come back to this later. We have found in the past, there's some quality concern issues within ramps and then paving with meeting elevations, water ponding, um, et cetera, et cetera. The reason I was taking amendment this year is to hopefully cut down my costs, which it greatly did. Um, feedback from the contractors was great. It's going to enable them to be more proficient, it's cut down timeline, and, um, really get us on some of these little alleyways I've never looked at since previously.
I know there was questions about, um, North Street and First Street. Just, I don't think that's necessarily in here, but people were asking about those projects.
The First Street Innovation Project, um, was delayed due to vicinity. They found some major issues with the two ski molds down in Hall, Water Street, whatever you want to call it. Right, basically the middle more projects. Just the week before last, they finished their last concrete pour. Last week, they signed off and they handed it over to us. Um, Parado Paving is the ones doing that work and they hope to mobilize in tomorrow and get started next week.
So that's sort of part of last year's?
Yeah, um, yeah. And then, uh, the other one, as you mentioned, North Streets. Um, we did just get the easements out in the mail today to the landowners with additional lining that we're going to for the sidewalk. Um, Viva 90 to 108 Construction Project also being paid by MSF Funds should be out to bid this summer.
So back to the actual matter at hand. Um, does anybody have any questions?
I have two. Uh, my first question is, um, I know we talked about it in the past. Are they burying, maybe the city manager's speaker, are they burying any, uh, power lines while doing this paving? I know that had come up previously.
There is no intention to do that.
Okay. Um, and then my other question is more, I just want to make sure I'm remembering this correctly. I know that Damian had said, I think Damian had said, not necessarily that the worst roads were being fixed, but the most salvageable, is that?
Um, yes and no. Um, sometimes the worse the shape the road is, the more money, uh, the budget it takes.
Right.
There are a couple this year that are quite bad that we're doing over in kind of the Evansdale area, like the East, I don't know how they named it, I think the East Everly, the East St. Johns. Also trying to, uh, approach it for a time longer and take a little bit more effort to repair. Um, a lot of factors going to account to pick the paving list, to implement your main roads first and then branching off, but.
Okay, this is a matter of trying to cover the most space with least money.
And do what, sort of, would be the best impact to the city.
Yeah, I appreciate you putting this list together. It's a lot of work.
Well, I hate it. There's nothing in Fifth Ward, which people are very upset about now that it's public. Um, and I don't really know what to say to them, other than we're trying to save money. But I do have a question about that because last year, I actually did get a decent amount of paving in Fifth Ward and people were having parking issues. There were two parallel roads that were being paved around the same time. And then there was nowhere, no on-street parking and those types. And I know that Greenmont is likely about to be in the same situation. If all of the streets in Greenmont are being paved and they're likely going to be in quick succession because, um, that's the most efficient, what will the parking situation over there be like during that time? because that's the most efficient, what will the parking situation over there be like during that time?
We are gonna try to phase them better this year. There was last year due to the, and that was one of the goals of kind of centralizing some of the pavings. We can control some of that schedule better where our contractors not zigzagging all over town. We can do a little bit more in-depth work in an area with certain parking restrictions and try to say, okay, yes, these two roads are side by side, we need to do this one, this one. And just be better scheduled and planned with our contractor.
I get a lot of, a lot of complaints, Dave and I, and usually Councilor Kueckie as well, attend the Greenmont Neighborhood Association meetings and parking complaints are very prominent over there with their blue curb parking. I even get complaints from the business owners about people parking in their, their parking lots very frequently and I just, doing all of the streets all at the same time, it's gonna be a nightmare.
We're gonna try to phase them over that more staggered and we do more notice while we're through, using our communications department to help with stuff out or being more proactive and not just getting our four-year ago to send postings.
I just wanna say thank you. Really appreciate all you guys do. How, how is the project on the future coming along? The one, the widening of the, what next?
That was the DOH project.
All the science, right, by the life sciences.
Mm-hmm, that's like campus driving, which is.
Yeah, the campus driving.
I'm, I want to take a look at all of the meetings.
That's fine. I think that was it. Thank you for checking in on the West Street.
Will this help with the idea of paving earlier in the season? Because usually it helps to keep it more toward June and July, because August, yes, too, is coming back and you have the start of school and it just gets a lot more chaotic.
Getting it out this way is what's gonna help with that. Last year, the project was very complex and it was long moving pieces, so we were a little delayed, which put us paving later, so a little more, that was all on us. We're a little more on top of it this year and getting it out. To then, to you all for approval, which will hopefully, we're looking at if this is passed, no later than June 3rd, holding the pre-construction meeting, which was the paving within a few days after that and wrapping up well before students come back.
That's very popular.
Great.
And then I also, while you're working with the Communications Department, as many before and after pictures, I think help people see. I have people ask where their tax dollars go and paving is certainly very, something you can demonstrate before and after, because a lot of effort goes in and, and people may have the short-term issues with parking, but it's just good to see the long-term effects that lead to the thank you, so.
Yeah, parking issues only for a day or two, so that's a very good input and I'll definitely make sure to provide those with a season.
And I think it's really interesting and innovative to do the ramps second. So, I'm curious to see how that is and maybe we can submit that as, as innovation once we've done it and it's successful, that there's less, if indeed, there's, there's less issues and how it all matches up and pooling. That might be something that other places might wanna emulate, because usually people do it in the other order. I understand.
There's one, right down in First Ward, that was done, and every time it rains, they puddle. In the winter, it freezes and I know there's a lot of, um, data officials that use that side. Hopefully, if we can get this safety concerns.
Yeah, I think it'll be interesting to see how that, how that laboratory works.
Yeah, fingers crossed.
All right. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Clarkwood, Callow.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Bougonne?
Yes.
Phil Kueckie?
Yes.
Lucy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Saleen?
Passes unanimously and let's get going. Now, we're to the city manager's report.
We are, thank you, Mayor. Just, there, there are a couple of items that I, I wanted to, most of council knows, knows about some of these and I just wanted to emphasize and reemphasize kind of where we're at with a couple of hot topic items. One is related to the airport. I don't think there's any secret that we're, we've been low for quite a few years in terms of the employments or the use, utilization of the airport. And this year, if we continue at the current trend, we'll be at 8,000. That's a critical number because the two, the FAA shares, does cost sharing with, with airports, but is based on a certain level of activity. And so, their threshold is 10,000 employments. If the city, if, if a, an airport reaches 10,000 employments, then the FAA contributes or shares in, in the amount of a million dollars towards capital items for that airport. That is huge. Since we've been below 10,000 for a number of years now, the city has subsidized those projects. If we were to hit 10,000 employments this year, that would be a net increase of FAA contributions to the city of $800,000. We feel as an administration, working with our, our airport director and others and the RED committee, that that employment number is absolutely critical to the future of the airport. And, and it's critical in terms of what the city can do to help incentivize continued development and foster continued development of the airport. So, there are several things that are being considered in terms of trying to increase that employment. And I've seen this done in the other municipal airports, so I've seen it done successfully. Number one, Southern Airways is providing a, an incentive, kind of like a, and trying to encourage those that are currently utilizing it to increase their utilization of it by providing incentives for, for like a buy one, get one free kind of, kind of concept in an, in an attempt to try to increase its, its employments. The other is that our airport manager, along with other, a few other folks, are working on a proposal that eventually will be brought to the city council that would propose an incentive, that the, the city provide an incentive, maybe in the form of very reasonable rates. We would subsidize the, the, the flight with a reasonable rate that would encourage individuals to, to utilize the airport. This is gonna take a concerted effort on the entire community's part, as well as the university, to make sure that we're utilizing this incredible resource that we have. It just, it is impossible to be productive in today's world and stay where we're at. So, it is, I feel very strongly that we need to move forward and, and increase the, not only employment, but the, the speed with which we are attempting to create, to, to extend the runway. The runway is critical in, in that it allows for larger aircraft to come in and will certainly help stabilize the employment process, but also increase the revenues whereby the airport can then be self-sustaining. The airport is not currently self-sustaining, requires subsidy from the, from the city. And as an enterprise fund, that's, that's not why we set up enterprise funds. We want them to be able to pay for themselves. Right now, it's impossible. And frankly, their operations are, are right, are pretty marginal. You go to the next level aircraft, then we're gonna have to enhance also the operation. So, everything's tied together. Just wanted to let council know and, and the community, try to rally the community and the university and all of us to, around the airport and its utilization. It's a resource that, yes, we can go south for 40 minutes or we can go north for 40 minutes or an hour, but that doesn't do our community any good. So, and in addition to that, as the airport develops, we, we expect that the commercial development and, and business development also will be enhanced, which then contributes to the tax base of the city. So, we're all tied together in this process. The other thing that wanted to, wanted to give a real word of appreciation to Ryan and Emily and Danielle for their efforts with POTA. I've heard nothing but good things. We had our inaugural, inauguration of the POTA program and I'm sure we'll hear more of it, but I for one, wanted to express appreciation for that creative way of trying to bring people into our downtown and, and make it a vibrant, vibrant area. One last thing I would like to mention is that there's been a lot of discussion about sheltering, about homeless. Certainly, administration and along with council, we're very much aware that we've got some issues that we've gotta deal with and we're sensitive to the, the needs of, of individuals who don't have the same opportunities as others in our community. But it's a very complex problem and I, and some of the folks that have spoken tonight have, they've said, we need to work together. And what I appreciated was that this is not something the city can fix on its own. And I think that's, that's the message that I heard, heard tonight and I, I continue. And I feel strongly that that's true. This is, this is an issue that's gonna have to be worked on by, by many, many people. Having said that, I think we were all concerned when Bartlett House announced recently that they, they just could not keep their doors open for the shelter. Since that time, there's been a tremendous effort by many of you and, and many of the business leaders in the, in the community to try to stabilize the, the sheltering process within the community, because that is absolutely essential in order to be able to deal with the, with this, with the complex issues that we're talking about here. And so, I just wanted to express my support for those efforts, those community efforts to try to salvage the sheltering side of that. We have to provide a good alternative to, to other, less, less healthy and safe alternatives that are currently in place. Having said all that, I, I appreciate council and their support. I, I hope you know that as, as a staff, your, your support does not go unnoticed and we, we certainly couldn't do our jobs without that. So, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Report from City Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. I just wanted to remind folks that the Police Civil Service Commission will be holding their entry-level police officer exam on Saturday, June 8th at 9:00 AM. And that will happen at the Public Safety Building at 300 Spur Street. Candidates will take a written exam and then pass at the 70 and if they pass, then they can take physical agility tests. And then after that, the commissioners will be doing interviews when they pass. So, try to streamline it and get it all finished in one day and see if we can get more folks in there and get them on board sooner than later. The clerk's office has been, in addition to HR, trying to get the word out for these entry-level exams. So, we're working with some innovative ways to try to get these, get the word out and keep connected with those who have already applied, because consistently, we have, um, we're showing up to take the test after they apply. So, we're, we're actually doing a little text to them, like you would get from your doctor's office and to remind them that they, they have a test coming up. So, and the, and it's been good, the response is quick and I think that we've found a new way of communicating with, with our residents, so I just wanna share that with you. And also, I wanted to announce that there's gonna be a signing, signing bonus of $10,000 for West Virginia certified officers and that's going to be places, the flyers are gonna be on social media tomorrow. So, don't have all the details, but I think Councilor Michael may have somewhere she wanted to share. Anyway, one other thing, it's quick, we've tried to make it quick and easy to apply. So, if you go to MorgantownWV.com, that's our website. There's literally three clicks to, to get to the, to the button where you click apply to take the exam. So, if you go to MorgantownWV.com, click Department and then Police Department and then Apply Now. And that's it, short and sweet, so I'll share the work.
Thank you. Report from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The West Virginia University College of Law Land Use Clinic is hosting a land use seminar tomorrow at Oglie Resort in Wheeling. I'll be attending and presenting a couple of sessions with Professor Richardson, some other faculty members and practicing attorneys. I always appreciate the opportunity to participate in and attend these functions. They're a great community building and expertise sharing opportunity and it's always a great resource to, to work with the attorneys at the College of Law. That's all I have to report today.
Nice. Report from city council members. Let me start that up in here.
Sure. First, I appreciate everybody continues to come in and wish their support and concerns for our shelter population. Had several conversations with many of them outside of these quarters. Another note, as it relates to community resources on social media, I've been asked where our neighborhood, when our neighborhood meetings are. So, I feel I should take a moment to let everybody know that I'm MorgantownWV.com website and our community resources. You can find the dates for all of the Neighborhood Association meetings, including the First Ward Neighborhood Association meeting, which is June 24th at Jack Roberts Park. And on June 24th will be the Great Race on High Street. And outside again, should be in the paper here shortly. June 8th, in relation to First Ward, is our First Ward Neighborhood Yard Sale, which will be the response to the kickoff of the June 7th, the amphitheater with Abomania. That will be running wild downtown. And I would also like to finish my report with saying congratulations this Saturday to the graduating class of 2024. I'll stop there. Thank you. Also, I need to figure out where my camera is. I think it's that one, but it's not like directly by online, so my head's a little gone. Maybe I'll switch to the city manager. Whenever you want. Sorry.
Thank you. A couple of things. Last week, we had the dedication, the MUB dedication of the, I don't mean to step on Dave's report, but I was just, I, I do wanna remark that it was just really very well done, very well received. It was interesting to have the dedication and the family of John Edwards' first water hauler in Morgantown highlighted. So, it was, it was nice, it's a nice relationship I think the city has with MUB now and I'm real, real pleased with that. The other thing I would mention is that the Deckers Creek Whitewater Project kicks off this week. The contractors, the, I guess engineers are in town, first assessing what is going on and they've put together a community group of stakeholders from various neighborhoods that will be participating and, and offering input. And the project looks very promising, so I'm pleased to see that too. We're making a lot of progress in a lot of different areas. And I know that, just simply to piggyback on what our city manager said, that we are very concerned about the homeless and we are looking into what possibilities there are. And we do need cooperation and we hope to achieve some of that. It's being discussed and being worked on. Nothing ready for primetime at the moment. But I assure you that there are numerous of people on this council that are very interested in, in seeing a resolution that will be positive. And I have very confidence that there will be some things appropriate. And I have very confidence that there will be some things appropriate, although unfortunately I believe these solutions, they're helpful, but it doesn't make the problem go away. It's something that's a continuous need. And I think the city will provide as much as it can, as long as it can, certainly to move it forward. End of my report.
Thank you. I wanted to start off by saying thank you to the city for listening to us and helping the police department and giving a bonus to recruit new members. We are down 20 officers, so that's really going to help with the enforcement of some of the, some safety issues we've been having. So I'm really excited about that and I want to say thank you. And the third ward, we are, we've been talking in our ward about starting up our meetings again every quarter, quarterly meetings. So we'll probably try to get that started in a couple of months. Other than that, I don't think I have anything to talk about.
Oh, well, the City Manager took most of my report. I was excited to move forward on some of these Bo Park things. The pools open this weekend, our concerts in the park are starting, the concerts at the amphitheater will be starting soon. So summer is a busy time for Bo Park, but I think that as an organization, they've been doing a very good job of getting information out. They have even started posting which, which parks are being mowed and things different days so people can plan ahead for their day. So excited for those things. A few of the highlights from the last couple of weeks. I attended the county's West Virginia First Foundation meeting where John Dowar was elected to be our representative to the foundation. I was able to talk with the new executive director of that foundation as well as mayors from other communities and happy to get the ball rolling on some of that stuff, including the county's, Mon County's application that is now live on their website. So organizations within Mon County are able to apply for the monies that specifically came to, to our area. I attended the MUB dedication and yeah, I don't want to step on Counselor Harshburger's toes too much, but Counselor Kwecki and I were able to attend the dedication and the luncheon and then we took a bus tour of Greenmont with the family and visited the, the childhood home and they were a fun group. They were rowdy a little bit. Got real, like going through people's apartments, it was so fun. Luckily, we know the owner of some of those properties and she worked out with her, her tenants that they were able to tour through some of their, what they remember to be their grandparents' home from, from their childhood. So that was really exciting. We did have our POTA kickoff last Wednesday. It was a really great event. It was the culmination of several years of work and I appreciate Attorney Simonton and Delegate Williams who, who helped get that passed at a state level and then Assistant City Manager, Emily Mazzarelli and Ricky Yeager in our communications. The city itself has been working on this for a very long time. We, we could have put this in place a year ago and we have spent that year working on it to make sure that it was good for Morgantown and right for Morgantown and everything was ready. I spoke to several officers over the weekend who reported that they have had no incidents yet. So I was happy to, I haven't talked to them in the last day or two, maybe Monday got crazy. But yeah, I, I'm very excited and I thank you all for being open to a new idea like that, that yeah, it's a change for West Virginia and it's a change for Morgantown, but there are a lot of that. There were people downtown with a drink pushing their strollers and listening to the music over, over the kickoff. So I'm, I'm excited to see what happens with they. Over the last couple of weeks, I've been working on some of the unsheltered issues. We had a meeting at H3 with an organization who has expressed an interest, a willingness and an ability to potentially partner with Bartlett House to keep the triage shelter open. So I don't think they wish for us to share too much yet, but, but that is definitely something that we've been working on. While I was at H3, I spoke with some of the Morgantown Community Resources Board members about the potential of putting in a storage system and lockers at the facility. And that is something that we are actively working on, trying to identify a location, whether that's indoors or outdoors, under shelter. We're, we're moving on that. It's just a matter of, we have board meetings once a month and this came to us after our last board meeting. Personally, I have attended the last two county commission meetings and tonight's Star City City Council meeting, asking for their cooperation. I haven't asked for funding, I haven't, I have simply asked as one councilperson, and I've made that clear each time, that I am not here on behalf of Morgantown City Council, I am here on behalf of myself, but asking for the county and other municipalities to come to the table and have a discussion. We are, we are clearly not the only municipality in our county that is dealing with, with some of the fallout of the social service crisis that we're having. I pointed out to Star City this evening that I have personally been panhandled. I have personally cleaned up inside of Star City Limits, the remnants of an abandoned encampment. And they recently had vandalism of their, their public rush bins along the rail trail. So I think that a lot of these municipalities are expressing an interest or a willingness to have a conversation. I don't know what type of help or assistance they may be able to give, but Commissioner Bloom keeps telling me every time I show up to their meetings, which I don't think I'm coming tomorrow, calm down, he always watches us. He says that we, we are not the solution. The social services are supposed to provide the solution and we're just supposed to provide support. And I think there's some truth to that. We are not the social services, but I think that we have to set the goals, we have to set the direction, we have to set expectations. We, I, I said to Star City tonight, again, at this point, I'm not even certain that the social services, it's hard to ask them to have the answer when we haven't asked a definitive question. My husband has, has used the analogy and told me that I could use it. When a pipe breaks in your home and you're having an emergency, you don't just stick a sign out in your front yard and say plumber needed. You go and look for someone who is qualified and capable and someone that you trust to help you address that situation. So I think that that's what we need to be doing. We need to come together with the other municipalities and try to come up with some measurable goals that we can set for ourselves, that we can then work with our social services to say, "This is what we need. How can we best support you?" So I do hope that that's something that we can set up soon. I will go to the next, hopefully, got to check my calendar, but the next Westover City Council meeting, I think Brannville is going to be more difficult. They, I believe, meet at the exact same time we do, at least Star City was an hour earlier. But the mayor and the city manager of Brannville have been at each county commission meeting, so it's not like it's a secret to them. Since I was at the Star City meeting, I will say, we had a few cleanups canceled over the weekend, a Greenmont cleanup, a Woodburn cleanup. The weather just didn't seem like it was going to cooperate, but Star City is doing a riverfront cleanup Friday, this Friday, from 9:00 AM to about noon. So I may try to go over there and show them some support as I'm asking us, asking them to show us some support. The only other thing I want to say is, Westover and Star City recently aligned their elections with the county and Westover says that they went from about 150 voters to 750 voters in their municipal election and Star City tonight said that they had more than doubled. And we as a group are unwilling to even have that conversation and I think it's an embarrassment. So I will again ask for us to at least have a conversation about reviewing our charter and the way we hold our elections, types of government. There's a lot of things in our charter that I think could just be discussed. Some of them may change, may be refreshed, some of them may not, but we as a group are unwilling to even have that conversation. So here I am asking again. And that completes my report.
Well, for what it's worth, I'm unwilling also to next two.
Yes, that's two.
As, as has been mentioned, the Morgantown Puppen Mile and the POTA kickoff last week was really fun. I look forward to seeing what that can do for the economic opportunities downtown. And the Morgantown Utility Board's honoring of John Edwards' water service from 1865 to 1889 was just an amazing event. A family came from across the country to participate and it was really moving. I really enjoyed that. I'd like to make it, I wish I could have done the tour of Greenmont. I had, had meetings I had to attend, that would have been fun. The South Hills Neighborhood Association also had a meeting last week. It was our first one since the Christmas time period holidays. So that was nice and Police Deputy Chief Chris Reber attended and I've seen him at a lot of our local events and he seems very well liked and I really appreciate his participation. This coming week, the Star City Peyton Project on the rail trail will be completed tomorrow. And so that's taking it from basically the core arboretum to the end of asphalt in the Star City Limits. And so that will be done. That was original trail, so it's over 20 years old and it's held up to this point in time, so definitely needed. And as Counselor Kwecki mentioned, the feasibility study on the Deckers Creek Whitewater Park idea is this Thursday with sort of stakeholder gathering in the evening to discuss the need with the, the group that's reporting that. And so that should be fun. Some of you I'm sure are on that, that thread, can attend that. So that will be Thursday late afternoon to have a chance to review that. And oh wait, General Manager for the Morgantown Utility Board formally today put in a request with our city manager to come to our next committee to hold to discuss the chief view of public service district that's being taken over from that, that district which is defunct as part of, to be part of. And so he's got to present what that looks like to us. That's all I have.
All right. I guess I'll just speak first on, on the topic of housing and homelessness. I do think Bill is correct in that this problem won't go away. No matter what we do as a council, it will not go away in our lifetimes. I can, if I can say one thing for certain. And while we can't solve the problem ourselves, there are effective steps that have been taken in communities our size, larger and smaller, all across the country that have made an impact on this problem and reduced the immiseration of the people who are low income or out on the street. And those effective ideas and policies already exist. And the ways that we structure policy, the things that we prioritize are always a choice in the direction of how we want to address that issue. So it's not, it is incumbent on us to take leadership on that and not kind of pass the buck, I think as Danielle was suggesting. And we should, we should take leadership in that space. And I did want to say that I appreciated Marley putting that Housing Department policy together for us and put in so much work behind that. And we, anybody that wants to help out with this issue and kind of take, take the lead with things like that, I think it's really, that's, that's quite the community service. I did go to the Star City meeting with Danielle. I was seven minutes late and that was already enough for me not to have been part of public portion, it was already over, unfortunately. I guess I'm used to our meetings where we just start seven minutes late. Not even at public portion. So, but good to see how other cities operate too. I thought we were informal. That's quite formal meeting, but that's, you know, I think it was good to hear community discussion. I appreciated meeting last night, or last week with service providers and Jenny, the mayor, also coming to that meeting. I felt it was productive to hear their point of view about things that, that they appreciate that the city does, but also ways that we could improve. And I, I thought it was a good and productive meeting. There wasn't a bunch of people shouting or anything like that, so that's nice. I would say, I would like to see a process similar to what the county has set up for the grant process for opioid settlement funds for us, unless we already have a pretty good idea in mind as to how we're going to spend those. And then I guess two community events. The We Bike West Virginia is having a fundraiser for their van, which is completely broken down, which is on June 1st at the Oaks Lodge, 411, I don't know if it's like a chapter lodge number, I guess probably. And then there will be the Suncrest Block Party on the 26th. I believe it's on a leash, if I remember right. I can't remember exactly. Suncrest Block Party, it's just like a community block party. They say they have the street blocked out.
Oh, 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 yes. I didn't.
Okay, you got it?
I was going to mean.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Coming out really fast. This weekend, right?
Yeah. Well, yeah, five days, yeah.
May 26th.
Yeah, yeah, May 26th, I believe.
I'm talking about something different.
Yeah. I was able to attend the Moonlight Market. I was there helping the table for Pride, but that is a great event. People should go out to the Moonlight Market. It's actually like surprisingly affordable, all the things people have. You kind of expect to pay for like local handmade stuff quite a bit more. Colleen Langford's husband makes pottery and it's really good and it's like normal price. Like it's not like crazy, like expensive, but I think he might be losing his shirt a little bit on there, but it's all right, he'll buy it. And so, yeah, it's just like a really professional looking, great event, like right there in the middle of our downtown. And I saw a ton of people I knew out there and it was just really, it was just a great, great little thing. And I guess to that as well, the Pride Block Party will be happening on June 15th at the waterfront. We have like, I believe like 13 performers now, 48 vendors. Some of those are just nonprofits tabling as well. We have like a 360 photo booth, all kinds of stuff. So it will be a lot of fun. And then there will be an after-party after that at Apothecary. And 123 will have a show directly afterwards as well. So lots of stuff going on throughout that weekend.
What time is it?
It is 12 to 5, yes.
To the amphitheater?
No, and at the amphitheater directly after, if you don't want to go to the bar, there will be two movies that will be shown directly afterwards for Movies in the Park. It'll be Luca and Bohemian. be Luca and Bohemian, Bohemian Rhapsody, directly afterwards. And finally, I just wanted to congratulate Jordan Graves, my son, for graduating high school here this Saturday, and so we're going to have a nice fun graduation party, and we're obviously very proud of him on his way to college, even though it's going to make my wife cry, so. And that's all I have to report, thank you very much.
I had a suggestion at the airport. So when we're working on enforcements, one thing that we have done before, which was well-received, was having some youth opportunity and/or citizen opportunity to fly somewhere like, for instance, I believe it's in Widdling, there's some sort of a air, air museum or airport museum, and so we had in the past like 4Hers or Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts or people who, people who had badges to attend to or, or groups, and it could be groups of any kind, flying to another West Virginia airport, which could potentially help both, both airports, but have, but having some kind of a shore destination and an event at the airport that highlighted the importance of airports and flight in our community. And I don't know how many enforcements that gathered the last time, but I do know that it was a fun event, and it got people flying that maybe wouldn't otherwise get to Pride, and I think people signed up ahead of time, so you sort of knew you had, but you could also have some possibility of walk-ons, and you could have them, the flights be either very inexpensive so that people had skin in the game, like $5 or something, or, or free, but what, however we felt it would work. I think that something like that, maybe having that a couple of different times, so maybe the talk would, you know, every two months or something for a few months for half the year, might get us some of the enforcements, not wait, not wait too long until the end of the year, so I like it that we're talking about this now, and we're making this be part of our conversation, because I think it's very important to have an airport. I know that our medical facilities have felt for speakers, for items that need to get here quickly, for other, other purposes, that having an airport in a community, particularly university, university community, community with federal facilities, a community with two of the main hospitals in the area, having an airport is crucial. And so whatever we can do to keep it, keep it viable and functioning and improving is marvelous. I appreciate everyone who's coming to speak about different issues regarding people with drug addiction problems, people with homeless problems, people with mental illness, and the things that we can do to improve that for our community. I appreciate the people who have been kind of representing council in different situations with H3 and with people who don't necessarily make it to H3, and the ways that we can look at it. It seems as though two of the things that are important right now and key right now are, obviously Bartlett Houses are everyone's been talking about, having some sort of a triage shelter arrangement, and how we as a council can support it, and how, and I appreciate working on getting the county and other people from other communities activated, and then also making sure that we determine how we want our transportation to get people to the H3 facility, whether it be a free bus route, or some other form of vouchers, or some other form of getting there. And I was pouring out all efforts, particularly working with the county and other municipalities to get us, get us there. Appreciate all of the different activities, like the Pride Block Party, the Great Race, Suncrest Block Party, I did not forget about, I was thinking that you were talking about something in the future, more distantly, but it's wonderful the way that the different neighborhood associations come up with these events, and the way that people can enjoy the fact that they live in our city, and enjoy how we, how we can have community as value, and how we can just spend time together and relax, and kids can play, and it just feels sometimes like a throwback to another era, and sometimes us keeping the better parts of ourselves, and seeing that what's, what's really important to people. I would like to additionally, like over the next month, determine how we would like to, determine how we would like to determine how we would spend our opioid funds, and that's another, one of the key things that has to happen soon. And when we're looking at the issue of having some sort of an ID, it could be that we should be looking at it as a county issue, in part because some of the beneficiaries, like the library and the park system, are beneficiary of a county, county funding through levies and such, where we have looked at some of those ID kind of issues in the past, and determined that because we're all so mixed, and we have people who have businesses here, we don't happen to live here, we have people who are paying into our various systems that are not residents, and just how we can best give out benefits, that it would be pretty clever to work with the county on an ID as we're moving forward. And feel free to debate that it should be a city one, but I just, just from, I made several different phone calls over the last two weeks, trying to just kind of feel out what might work. And I appreciate the issues about housing policy, and I'm working on following up with those, and I really appreciated the conversation with service providers, like people who initially work with homeless and addicted populations who needed services and were kind of the front lines. I really appreciated having a conversation with six to seven people. If you have a conversation, and it's no offense to super large groups, but six to seven people, you can actually hear each other, you can have, because some of the conversations that we've had on these issues have been with like 37 people, or, you know, and, and it's just hard to actually have human conversation. And so I, I appreciate those kinds of settings, and it doesn't mean that we couldn't have a larger group and break down into tables to discuss different issues, and, you know, have a large group, but then divide into tables of six or seven people, but I just think it, you could get more to the heart of the matter with some kind of a discussion that's either a limited agenda and a large group, or a smaller group, and really being able to have, have conversation. So I appreciate Council Butchers setting that up, and that's it for me.
Pursuant to West Virginia State Code Section 6-9A4B9 to discuss matters related to the acquisition and development of real estate in the second ward, and I also move that pursuant to West Virginia Section, Code Section 6-9A4B12 to discuss matters protected by attorney-client privilege, we move to executive session.
All right, you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. On favor, yes, okay. And move to executive session.